You don't have to be so polite. Send it here.
No.
Yeah.
Oh, you're right. Mm hmm. Oh, hold on. You've got a. The sound quality is degraded and very poor, is the comment. Well, we haven't been tried yet, so. But but that's, I mean, everybody should try very hard to project, not just speaking to the microphone, but when we're relying exclusively on the owl. It's.
Just speak up.
Yeah.
All right, that's good. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Town of Camden Select Board meeting for January seventeen, two thousand twenty-three. The new year, um, the Select Board, uh, uh, excuse me, the, uh, the, the agenda is, uh, can be found on the Town of Camden website, uh, uh, under the Select Board Selector packets agenda. Uh, on that agenda is a link to Zoom if you'd like to join via Zoom, please do so. Uh, also, we are streaming through Zoom, uh, on YouTube, uh, just FYI to all out there, and we'll try to uh, keep our voices up if we can and and volume because the the sound, sound quality and the situation is not the best. So just wanted to stand out upfront. In terms of Zoom, we, um, ask any attendees would like to, uh, make a comment during the meeting or, uh, provide some information to raise, if you'd like, that's my preferred method, Q and A. Uh, if we can't always get some questions and answers and do not monitor chat. So please understand that, um, and again, I will try, uh, to stay close to the mics and also the sound pickup is from the owl here because of the mode we're in, so we'll have to, um, do it until we get our a discussion hopefully in February about upgrading the system and making it a little bit more operative. Thank you. So with that, um, before I start the agenda, I would like to, um, you know, just inform the board, I want to move one item on the board with your approval, and that's basically to move the approval of the Duck Derby on Sunday, May twenty-first from the Consent Agenda to an Action Item. So, so here. There you go. A disagreement, that's what we will do, uh, so we'll have a conversation about the Duck Derby. And, uh, given there's no disagreement, we'll move forward the rest of the agenda, starting with public comment on non-agenda items. Do you have anybody in the audience who'd like a public comment on non-agenda item? Sir. And please, as usual, if you may, send your comments, remarks to three minutes and I appreciate it.
Oh, thank you. My name is Roger Akeley, uh, I live on Cross Street. And I just wanted to say that, uh, since the town has, uh, repaired the, uh, Suisway Gate and the, uh, dam, the water is flowing over the dam now, it's been very gratifying uh, to see it go over the dam the way it's supposed to. I know over the last few years, maybe even the last twenty years or more, there haven't been significant, uh, repairs done to the dam. But the State of the Dam believes that it is necessary for a few more short-term minor repairs, uh, to occur. Um, the Montgomery River Study is in process and probably is going to go two years, who knows, could go longer, you know, it's complicated project. But in the meantime, the aura, uh, of the, of the dams and the area of the dam, we think can be enhanced by a small, uh, expense, expense, uh, funds, uh, dedicated to strategic repairs of the dam.
Thank you. Young lady, next to, which gentleman, I'll give you a minute, Tom.
Why do you call me a young lady?
Oh, I'm sorry.
So nice of you.
You can call me a lady, I'm not that.
No, I wouldn't do that. For niece burger, Cross Street. Because there does not seem to be a budget line item specifically for the Montgomery Dam, we, the State of the Dam group, are presenting the Town of Camden with a pledge in the amount of eleven thousand five hundred dollars, which will make monies available for repairs and maintenance for this coming season. Your attention to our local treasury and the heart of Camden is most appreciated. We ask the Camden Select Board to assist by recommending to make the short-term repairs a reality.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, very generous, I appreciate that we all first.
Good.
Anyone else, uh, um, I'm sorry.
Hi, Jennifer Haley, Camden Miss. The pledge that Bernice just mentioned of funds from the State of the Dam Falls Committee is a robust and sincere statement and offer to make necessary repairs to the Montgomery Dam. We, as the State of the Dam Falls Committee, are here with our voices to ask, along with our concerned community, to keep the water flowing over the dam for the upcoming year. The sound of the rushing waterfall at Camden Harbor is its own voice, and it should continue to be heard as well. Let's take care of what we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Um, that's a talk.
And you can finish with that subject.
I didn't see any other hands, Tom, so.
Excuse the limp, I'm getting a new hip next week.
Sorry?
I said, excuse my limp, I'm getting a new hip next week. Yeah. Tom Resick, sixty-seven Ross, and oh. Uh, good evening, uh, I appreciate the opportunity to offer, uh, some clarity to Otter's comments at the last Select Board meeting on December twelfth regarding the Coastal Children's, uh, Museum decision to not further pursue a new site for their museum at the Tannery Park location. Uh, the Friends of Tannery Park were concerned that Otter's explanation of the museum's decision might have left the impression that the Friends of Tannery Park or some other neighborhood group was opposed to the possibility of a new children's museum being a part of a new Tannery Park. Uh, quite the opposite was true, uh, the Friends of Tannery Park felt that a properly scaled children's museum would be a perfect combination within a community park with a shared preschool natural playground, combined with, uh, Camden Farmer's Market and situated between, uh, Tannery Park Site between Mount Batty and the McGutu Cook River and the Riverwalk. We engaged in numerous phone conversations and two face-to-face meetings with the board members of the Children's Coastal Museum. We were very excited about the possibility of this multi-use educational, recreational, community park concept. Gail Bettigan, uh, who was the, uh, president of the museum, uh, I expressed my concern about the interpretation of her comp of, of what Otter said about her comments. And she forwarded a letter to me, addressed to you guys and to the friends, which I'm going to read. Uh, "Dear Camden Select Board and Friends of Tannery Park, the Coastal Children's Museum had a very, had very positive meetings and emails with both the town officials of Camden and also with the Friends of Tannery Park about our interest in possibly locating a new museum building at the Tannery Park Site. Each of the above organizations couldn't have been more welcome. Our decision to not go forward, forward with this project on that particular site was totally based on the environmental constraints of that area and of the impact that our museum would have possibly on traffic and parking. Just to clarify, both the town officers and the Friends of Tannery Park were very positive about having us put a building on that site. Thank you for the kindness and time both groups offered us. Best regards, Gail Bettigan, current president of the Board Coastal Children's Museum." Um, so, yeah, I just wanted to clarify that because. And I, I mean, we have a very good relationship with them, she's asked me to be on their board. So clearly, we're on the same path.
Maybe you can still work.
Yeah.
And take care of that, yes.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments in the public, uh, before we move on to the agenda? But thank you very much, all of the comments, I thank you very much, um. Uh, let's move on to the approval of the board minutes from December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Any comments, direction?
Uh, we would love to see the minutes.
Okay.
I was having a moment of like, oh, no, I didn't read that.
I assumed it was there, but, um, just a motion to table. A day and certain of, uh, whatever.
So.
Second.
Seconds. Oh, I was in that game. They're really still bad when you all know. Bad. Thank you. Yeah, praise a little bit of word, doesn't he, like?
There. Actually, we cleared up now, um.
So I had seconded the motion.
Motion made in the second table. Send them all those in favor. Five zero, thank you very much. Um, for a consent agenda, again, just just correcting, as I said earlier, there will only be two items, and they are the approval, uh.
It's going to be extra, since the labor, that whole thing with the audio, since we're relying exclusively on this, like, any.
Let me say it again. All right, again, reminding everybody, uh, we are, uh, uh, streaming YouTube via Zoom. And because we're relying on the owl, which is a single device just in front of us, and that's going to be, um, I'll try to speak to it more loudly, um, and because this mode just is not the best for audio for all of you who are trying to listen tonight, so I'm gonna spend a little less attention to the microphone here, a lot more attention to the owl, if that helps, and we'll all do the same. Where we are right now at the moment is on item three in our agenda, which is now two, uh, consent agenda items, the first of which is the approval of the closure of Atlantic Avenue for Winterfest at Camden Public Library for Saturday, January twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. The second item is the approval of a Vittler license for Peter Oats at sixteen Bayview Landing. Uh, are there any objections to that, those two items on the consent agenda? Not hearing any of those two items hereby adopted. Item four, we have, uh, three items on the public hearings, is just to curious, is there anybody here who will be speaking to any of these licenses for the public? Um, they're not, the reason I ask that is because the purpose of the public hearing is for the public to provide input to the Select Board, uh, prior to its deliberation on the matter. Um, I would, I would normally go through a procedure there and ask individuals from the public or on Zoom to raise their hand, uh, to make a comment pro or against, or just to speak to the item, and then I'll close the public, uh, discussion and revert to Select Board, uh, to a red. Uh, because we don't have any public time hearing or seeing, we will close the public hearing portion.
Yes, no dog is here.
Okay, okay, good, good. Thanks for telling me, sir. I'll go through the speech again, just to begin, uh, the, the purpose of the public hearing is to get public input of any kind uh, for the benefit of the Select Board, um, and, uh, I, I will, I will go through each one and I will ask if there's any public uh, input, uh, please be courteous, please be brief, uh, identify yourself, um, all questions will through me as, as chair, and, uh, from the, from the Select Board, and, uh, as I said, then we will deliberate and then, and act on the matter at hand. The first one is the application of Peter Oats sixteen Bayview Landing for renewal of class one restaurant liquor license. Is there any public here? And I don't believe there is, so I'll close the public hearing and revert to Select Board deliberation. Do I have questions or in motion?
I make a motion that we apply the, that we approve the liquor license for Peter Oats. Second.
Motion made in second discussion. All those in favor? Five zero, thank you. The second is the application of Bayview Street Inn at sixteen Bayview for renewal of a hotel class one A liquor license. Anybody from the public or, or Zoom, I don't see any hands, the publics are closed. The public, where should I revert to Select Board decision, uh, discussion or motion?
I make a motion that we approve the liquor license for the Bayview Street Inn at sixteen Bayview. Second.
Motion made in second discussion. All's in favor? Five zero, thank you. To the last application, it is for, uh, Jason Popple, DBA, Camden Snow Dogs, who are a special amusement committee at the Camden Snow Bowl. Has some public comment on this one? That's usually especially.
Hi, I'm Jason, uh, Camden Snow Dogs, also Harper Dogs, uh, and Camden resident. Uh, yeah, I'm just trying to get some music at, uh, Snow Bowl on Friday nights and whatever days it has to be scheduled with music, too. Due to weather concerns and stuff like that, so.
Can you give us some schedule and plans for these Friday evening events? Is it the?
Yeah.
Number hours?
Yeah, we're going to be going from about five, we're, uh, five to six, or maybe four to six, or five to seven, depending on the band and on the crowd. But, uh, no later than seven, seven thirty. Um, just, you know, anywhere from two to four piece bands, some acoustic, some rock, some, uh, wood grass, you know, a little bit of everything.
The location of this, uh, will be outdoors?
Inside the lodge.
Inside the lodge, correct, totally.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is this, I guess. I mean, I guess my understanding, you must need approval for it because you're here, um. Isn't it already happening?
Well, we, that's the first one, the second one, we haven't, we don't ever did.
Oh.
Yeah, because I didn't realize that I had to get approval because I didn't realize the liquor license, uh, triggered the uh, approval needed for music and special, special events. There it is.
Interesting, it seems like that's the kind of thing that would fall under the discretion of the Snow Bowl manager. I mean, if somebody over there in charge of things wants to decide that it's okay to have music, which just seems off the dish. Question is to, to go through this, I'm certainly in favor of it, my, I'll say, my son felt it was very loud and he was complaining a little bit, but he's, he complains about everything, so. Um, I think it's probably, but I'm sure y'all, I'm sure you'll take feedback if everybody there thinks it's two thousand.
Yeah.
So thanks for doing that.
Oh, no problem, it's just, uh, whatever we can do to draw people to the Snow Bowl during the winter and just maybe probably show that it can be done in a respectful, you know, manner, and that we can possibly do more events in the summertime and stuff like that, so.
I hear that all the time, that we should have more events there.
I would love to see some music in the summertime and people sitting up on the hill and stuff like that, I think that would be great. Yeah. It's just winding everything up and, you know, making sure it doesn't overlap with any other events, so. Like all the wins and stuff like that.
Do whatever.
Keep the ideas coming.
Yeah, so hopefully maybe one to admit my, like, my.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thanks for coming, appreciate it, thanks, just. Uh, any other public comments, um, and seeing or hearing, um, all the work to close public hearing, work to Select Board comments? None? Motion to approve?
I make a motion that we approve the special amusement permit for Camden Snow Dogs. The second.
Motion made in second discussion, all's in favor? Five zero. Have, have, have at it.
Thank you, Jason, and let us know when you have, uh, music plans, whatever, we're happy to put it on the Camden website.
Oh, okay.
We can, we can help, you know, share the word, so.
Should I just tag the town or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, tag the town. Tag Sophie, that makes sense.
She volunteered. Okay.
Happy to know.
Cool, because I only just shared till I had the Snow, Snow, Snowball page and Snow Dog page and Harrow Dog page.
Yeah.
So, great.
The yacht club maybe, too. Love that.
Onwards to our action items, and I'll move to the first action item, uh, what I modified earlier in the agenda, that is based to the approval of a, of a duck derby by the West Bay Rotary on was it Sunday, May twenty-first at two P M? Discussion. Allison.
Um, did it say? You're a member of the West Bay Rotary, right? Um, so do you have any information about, is it not, because, so for the past, um, three years?
Three.
How soon? I was going to say, who's in charge of it? Um, that's good to know.
Please, please.
This is Peterson, nothing other than.
No participation, yeah.
Thank you.
Introduce yourself, please.
I'm Sandy Crox, I'm, uh, a member of the West Bay Rotary Club. And, um, I'm here to ask permission to hold the duck derby our race again this year. We, the week of former Memorial Day due to the tides, have to reach out to the high tide, so that's why it's the week before.
I see.
Um, again, we set up noodles for a racetrack, we go down the left side of the, of the falls and come out right to the dock. We have kayaks scattered around to pick up all the loose, um, ducks, and then we come back the next day to pick up, um, the ducks that are caught in the rocks, um, during the, during the race. Um, so I know Allison helped us last year, she did a great job cleaning up. Um, we drained it completely and we're in there pulling out a bunch of stuff, and we'll do the same thing. And we'll be there the day after picking them up. I think we were very successful. Uh, I think there were six that we turned in after the Sunday, um, that we, uh, we turned into this, um, the chamber office, and they were giving certificates to the, uh, ice cream place.
It's about a whole, really?
Yeah.
That was probably predominantly my kids, um. So. I mean, I have enjoyed this with Peter the last few years, or I think, you know, the last two years, we tried to make a really big effort to get them all. I think the first year we did it, there was more enthusiasm. I know I did a better job ahead of time getting the word out about cleaning them off afterwards, and maybe Peter did too, and then the next year we were tired or something. I really liked what you guys did with the reward system, uh, I still, what we talked about last year was that there was going to be like an accounting of it, so keeping track of the number that are lost. I get a lot of comments about this and, you know, restaurants are not giving people plastic straws, all these things, and then we intentionally threw these ducks in that crack and there are at least a couple hundred every year that that away. And I guess to me, that's not really an acceptable loss rate.
I think last year was, was really good. I think we, we really, between the kayaks, the kayaks and the, um, this, the next day picking up on the rocks, that really helped because they do get caught in the rocks, and if you don't get them out that same day when the tides come in, they're going to be flushed out and, uh, um, I was unaware of it, but if you want an accounting of the, before and after, we can do that.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot that's still, that are being missed. I mean, I could just tell my friends that saw them, I mean, it's.
If you find, if you see that, you should let us know, because we're in good faith, we felt we had cleaned up, um, the ducks that were at least visible and available to us on the island and going down the right side. That's what the bulk of them are. Um, I don't think there were any left in the, in back of the falls.
Right, I think we got those fairly well. I think it's the ones that crack and split open and then sink, and then they end up wedged in different places and you, you don't see them, but then you're out and, you know, for days and days and days and months afterwards, you end up seeing them from a different angle or.
This is first I've heard this, so.
I mean, it's a good lesson in not, it's not just the duck. People lose their mind about the ducks a little bit, so if I've been doing this, but what I always find is every time I go to look for the ducks, the whole lesson we're sort of supposed to be that the majority of the trash we find when we're looking for the ducks is other trash that otherwise would have been missed that we're not noticing or not looking carefully, so. The, the idea at the beginning was kind of that it would be a net, we'd be removing more plastic than than is added, but I think maybe if we could just this year do a little bit better job ahead of just a few more people maybe, um, and we could coordinate.
Uh, yeah, we will do whatever it takes to, uh, to satisfy, I know the, the kayaks really helped clean it up, but ones, the ones that get stuck in the, in the falls and the rocks, we have to come back that next day and the water's low, and we're able to get up on the island and clean it up.
I think removing the noodles so fast is part of the problem, too, because the tide changes and then they I, I know I've run down like so many times so that, to the fisherman's off to grab, with my eldernet to grab them as they're floating away like later on in the day. I don't know, it's just.
Uh, usually we're cleaning out all the ducks out of the racetrack and around, load it clean. It's the ones that get disturbed with the high tide if, if they're, if they're, uh, caught in the rocks.
Right.
And we don't, can't get to them until the next day, one more, it's a little tough again.
But it's still a two hundred ducks that are being, that, I mean, Peter told me what the numbers were before, and it seemed really high.
They did in their counting.
And he thought that was a really good, you know, he said it was about ten percent.
I think we did in the counting, but we'd gladly do that if.
That's, I think it was essential.
I mean, we have three thousand ducks that we, that we launched, so we can, they're all numbered.
Right.
We can count them, we counted them before, and then we can count them after.
I think it's good.
I think it's great. I completely support, uh, Allison's request to have a, a better accounting system. I have three ducks in my office that I have fished at Lake Beach, um, that were all split up, um, so that's, that's the issue, that they've been no longer floating. Um, so the other thing is, I would encourage the West Bay Rotary to look into other types of ducks, maybe even than the plastic ones, the hard plastic ones.
Be more of a rubber one, rubber.
Right. Yeah, maybe, maybe they're easier to fish, they're, they don't split open.
We do some homework, and I, and Allison know what we find.
Um, or, or salt ducks that dissolve in water.
Maybe so. I don't know, yeah, I remember running to that, but we should look into it.
Because I think it would be super, it would be super interesting to have the, the, the Duck Derby, but have an innovative type of duck that's zero impact on the ocean and the river.
Absolutely.
Challenge, but I think, uh, for a challenge, you know, we'll see what we find.
So we can make Peter Oats shake ducks. How much money, the thing that got, when I was talking to Peter about this before, he was like, well, this is our best, our, our, our biggest fundraiser, we raised all this money.
Under twelve thousand dollars.
Wow.
And that all goes back into the community, nonprofits.
Well, I think it gets, it gets some actions. Are there any other comments, Tom, or Stephanie? Hey, like, hey, others, if you have, I think you did, talk about the economy, talk about evaluating the future, all to materials, that's probably a great idea. Um, and anything else?
That's it. I'm, I'm happy to do, I think, I think I'm thinking, you know, last week, last year, because I think I had COVID or was sick.
I feel like a lot of people ended up not being able to do it, and I was like, this isn't as much fun as it used to be.
Do you want me to come do my, uh, report? Allison, I think you'll come back.
I think that the, probably before the town manager, she can share the best, the best part, it comes to saying, anyway, but, um, but it's such a well. To the accounting, I don't care if you copy, you copy the Select Board, you can do that also, that's not a problem. So the accounting is that that'll happen this year, and, uh, and they brought to the investigation, uh, just, just, just let us know.
I mean, it was supposed to be a positive, whether Peter and I talked about it before, and it's probably neat also dropping the ball, was that after the event, not, we were going to do like a presentation of like, this is all the trash that we found, that, you know, non-duck, this is all the good that came out, this is all the money that West Bay Rotary raised. This is how many ducks got away, this is how many we got, and just kind of a good.
We can give you an overall accounting, that's, that's easy to do, and pick pitches, the, if you're going to be involved with it, and pick pitches of what we pulled out of the the falls area.
Yeah, we can clean up the public.
What's there every year?
Oh, yeah, it's.
Well, thank you, thank you, Sandy, for listening to us.
Yes.
Thank you. We love the duck.
And a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the Duck Derby on Sunday, May twenty-first.
Or second?
Motion made in second, any further discussion? I'm seeing any harmony, all in favor? Actually, thanks again, Sandy.
Thank you.
The second, uh, well, item was first, uh, is the, uh, bit award for the, um, our, the real property equitation project. And we'll invite Chris to carry the, kind of the podium to. And we'll invite Chris to carry the, come to the podium to, it's a long story this one.
Sandy, we just do this.
Can we have popcorn?
I know, I see that I yet to undergo a full forensic review.
Carrie, we'll start off with explaining what we've done, because I'm right where here. I will start off by explaining what we've done so far.
But louder, because right now I can tell.
Okay, gotcha.
Really.
Get this out of me later.
Actually, Carrie, why don't you move the podium close to the aisle?
Okay.
Just remember also that we are recording and it'll be uploaded on D N two, so yes, so there's some backup.
Oh, yeah.
Please, Mr. Carrie. Okay, so, uh, let me start off with the state constitution, um, section seven. I'm not putting any ducks in the water.
No, that's good.
Um, while the public expenses shall be assessed on estates, a general evaluation shall be taken at least once every ten years. The last time we did one was two thousand four. The updates that we've done between then and now are updates, they're not full revaluations.
Right.
And a full revaluation is interior and exterior inspection. They measure and list um, every building on the property and request admittance to the interior so we can uh, grade and make sure we got that data right. That's the full measurement list and it takes two years. The updates that we've done is taken, depending on uh, which year it was, um, anywhere from three months to, to six months. So it's a lesser process. I mean, it's a greater process.
And, and just to look at the public's edification, because like I said, the word be evaluation, look, mind, one thing, my house may be evaluated, that's it. But the interim uh, between four four and now, the two, or, but then we've done.
We did three.
What, three, for, for, of what reason that those three died?
So in, in, in every case, you know, we, we study sales all the time, current sales. And, and we come up with a ratio, which is the assessed value divided by the sales price. And what that does, it allows us, it helps us understand how our assessed values are in relation to the market.
Mm-hmm.
Because the other thing that the constitution says is that we have to assess at market value. Because of just value, the Supreme Court has said it's just value equals market value. So we keep very close tabs on what the market is doing. And so to complicate my response to you is that we certify our ratio, our overall ratio, all the, all the ratios combined. We, we certify with the state at, we hope a hundred percent, because at a hundred percent, the twenty five thousand dollar uh, homestead exemption is worth twenty five thousand dollars. To the six thousand dollar veterans is worth six thousand dollars. If we were certifying at ninety percent, those exemptions would only be ninety percent of what they are. But even more importantly than that is that um, uh, personal property. So we now have about twelve million dollars in personal property. If we were at ninety percent, we would only get, be able to claim ninety percent of that. And so now we're talking about some real value that we're not, we're not able to collect, and therefore that puts pressure on the mill rate. So another word for a revaluation is an equalization project.
Mm-hmm.
And what that means is, you know, when we did it in two thousand seventeen, I remember a graphic that I put up on the board that impressed a lot of people, was that on the waterfront, we were at sixty two percent. At the, say, say around Pearl Street, we were at eighty five percent. So what that means is that the people on Pearl Street, um, were paying, were paying more in taxes than the people on the waterfront. If you tax only at sixty two percent of the property. So what we do in a revaluation is we bring everybody to the same level. So if, if, if one sector is at eighty percent and another at sixty, and our target say is ninety five percent, the eighty percent's gonna rise fifteen percent. And the sixty percent is gonna go up thirty five percent.
Mm-hmm.
And that's why some people, when we do a revaluation, they'll say that my neighbor only went up a thousand dollars, I went up fifteen hundred, why is that? That's why that is. And so to me, and I, I think, I think that any assessor, the equalization portion is much more important than anything else. Because that's when we have, we're sure that the tax burden is being spread uh, fairly and equitably in the same manner to everybody. And that's, that's the goal of this.
Is it, just asking questions again through public comments, I receive.
Yeah.
Why, uh, if two thousand four is the last time there's full reevaluation that was done in which for what, uh, eighteen years later or whatever the numbers, um, why did, is there no enforcement of the ten years?
There's very little enforcement. And, and, and when there is enforcement, it, it's, it's usually, this is just one of many issues. And, and I'm pleased to report we don't have any issues that I know about.
That was important to clarify that, because when people say revaluation, they really may not understand that there are different levels of evaluations and why they occur, revaluations that occur. Most recent one was because of the ratio that you mentioned where the value of the market was shot up because of COVID and et cetera. Uh, made our ratio dip down to like seventy.
Well, let me expand on that, exactly, exactly. Right now, so I was looking at sales yesterday. And we had one that cracked eighty percent.
Could you, I'm imagining listening, when, like when I was listening to this the very first time, can you give some real examples like a house that sells for this amount of money that's assessed for this amount of money?
Sure, sure. Although I can't do the math in my head so quickly, so if I have the numbers not exactly right, this is why. So a house that, that's valued at four hundred thousand dollars, sells for three hundred thousand, I'm sorry, sells for five hundred thousand dollars. That'll be the ratio of say eighty five percent. A house that is valued at four hundred thousand and sells at four hundred thousand, that ratio is a hundred percent. That house is valued at four hundred thousand, sells for three hundred thousand, that ratio is probably a hundred and ten percent. Okay, so, so what we're finding right now though, is this COVID market is although it has slowed down, Sandy and I were talking about this before the meeting started. There are fewer sales now, but the prices, people are not necessarily, there's no bidding wars going on now. Uh, people might be getting a little less than their asking price, but the, but the prices are not going down.
Mm-hmm.
That, that, they, they reached, maybe they will, but right now they've reached a level where they're staying, where they're staying. And, and things are selling. When, when, when interest rates dropped last month, now at that time, we had twenty six active listings in Camden.
Mm-hmm.
As soon as those interest rates dropped, half of them went under contract.
Well.
And if, and if they wind up closing, then we'll have, you know, thirteen houses, uh, properties on the market. Obviously, it's changing, things come on and go off every, every day, but, but that's the situation. So one of the things that drove the prices up was a lack of inventory.
Right.
Yeah.
And we haven't seen that improve at all.
Right. Well, to your analogy, the four hundred thousand dollar analogy that I would mention is, you mentioned forty, five hundred, four hundred, three hundred. But in a market like this, that four hundred exaggerate a little bit, easy now, could be sell for eight hundred thousand dollars, and in case your ratio is fifty percent.
Right, right, right. So that's an exaggeration, just that's what, that's what a, a boom market like this can do to the ratios you're talking. I said that one cracked eighty, we had two in the forties and a bunch in the fifties. So that's still going on today.
Yeah, it's true.
I think.
Sure, Carrie, why did we, why did it take us eighteen years to do a full reeval, reevaluation?
It's a good question. And, and I, I think it was irresponsible, but um, not gonna cast dispersions on my person, on a predecessor, but it shouldn't have happened. He should have made a case to the select board that it needed to happen. Anything else, Tom? What else?
So I would assume that the, you know, part of the reason that it doesn't happen is because it's often very unpopular and often results in not what happened in two thousand seventeen, but what just happened recently. Um, where in two thousand seventeen, that it was, when I was talking to people about it, it was a lot easier to make the case that there was like a benefit to many people who maybe deserve, not deserve a benefit, but needed the benefit. There were so many, it was that Pearl Street situation where they're paying more than their, their share. But it seems, correct me if I'm wrong, that the most recent phenomenon has been the value of land, for the most part, is what's gone up so much and it's less what, it, it used to matter a lot more, the, the type of house that you have. And so the person that couldn't afford to build a really nice house was paying less in taxes and now that matters a lot less than the location. And so we saw the value of like the mid-range properties skyrocket in this last boom, or whatever you want to call it. But the million, two million, eight million dollar houses didn't see that same increase in value. So for the most part, people that were already paid a lot in taxes or had really expensive homes are paying about the same. Or actually, in a lot of cases went down some. And people with mid-range or lower range houses saw an increase.
Mm-hmm.
So that's where I unders, I understand the resist, I, of course, that whole fairness and fair market value and blah, blah, blah. That makes a lot of sense, but it doesn't uh, you know, sometimes it doesn't result the way you want it to. It seems like that's the trend for us.
Mm-hmm. Well, that, that was the early part of the COVID market. I, I think that, that evened out as time went on.
Mm-hmm.
The, the, the more uh, uh, the more expensive properties, they, they have, you're right, like with a property that went up fifty percent, uh, which was almost typical for a while, in, in the mid-level area, um. The, 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 the more expensive properties didn't go by that much, but they went up a lot. I mean, if you looked at it dollar-wise, they certainly went up more in dollars than the mid levels.
Sure, but it resulted in sometimes in lower taxes because they were paid for.
Yeah, because, because they went up less than the average, right?
Right, so.
But I think it's important to note, though, in the recent, correctly, uh, the recent re-eval we did was based on market sales only. And so we got a lot of comments from people that said, I didn't improve my house, I didn't do this, like, or, or an extra neighbor added rooms to their home. That doesn't, that, that factor is huge, can be huge. That will be evaluated in this.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely. That's a huge difference.
Yeah.
Because even when they, in the category of million dollar homes, uh, many of them have expanded dramatically. And that, that goes beyond what happened when somebody next door sold their home, which was the basis of the most recent valuation.
But don't we keep track of that? So does anything happen to the assessed value when somebody does a major renovation?
Yes.
So that's already happening?
It, it, it should happen, but it may not happen in, in concert with the amount. At least my experience, and it not happened because of inflation in terms of building costs and that kind of thing, didn't keep up with market. If I did an improvement on my home three, four years ago, it would be totally different than today in value.
What I'm hoping is that for all these people like me, that the interior of their home is actually less than what might be expected, like it's actually declined over time, it's like, oh, this kitchen is that, it might help people like us, is there any?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you know, people don't have to allow us into their, into their homes.
Okay.
Uh, however.
What happens if they don't?
Then I don't find out what you just said.
Yeah. So you can look all around. But so, so that I think is something that would be helpful for people to understand, like what the, what are you looking for, what are you not looking for, can they get in trouble for anything? Do you go and talk to the code enforcement office that says their stairway was too narrow and now the kids have to move out or? I, I don't know what the right, I'm not trying to say what the right answer is or isn't there, but you must see a lot of things or whoever does.
I'm not aware of any code enforcement that happens during evaluations.
Not really. I mean, I mean, if I see something agreed, so agreed as that I recognize it, I, I certainly would, if it was a safety issue, I certainly would say so.
Yeah. Now, that must put you in a difficult position determining what is, or isn't a actionable safety issue.
No, just making Clint aware, he can go and take a look and say, no, it's fine.
If, if children are being housed in locations where there's not proper regress, there absolutely should be a report.
I am not in any way saying what I think should or shouldn't happen. I'm wondering what does happen and how that's handled.
It goes the other way too. Clint will tell me about an improvement that maybe I don't know about.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and, and then I knock on everyone and assess it. It, I mean, we, we don't, you know, we don't work in a vacuum.
Yeah, I'm not in any way trying to say that something shouldn't happen. I'm just curious.
There's so many factors involved, you know, you can't answer them. But, but the most important part of it is that they do and don't need to provide access to the rest to their homes if they don't want to, but that can have a double-edged sword effect. Also, I know Camden is absolutely perfect with permits, but I also suspect there are work spent on without permit.
I hate to tell you, but I think it's quite a few.
Because you go in the house to see it, you see the new kitchen.
Oh, yeah, I know. So how do you handle that when you find that work has been done without a permit?
Well, you're, you're in the gray area now. We, we talked about safety, so let's take that off the table.
Mm-hmm.
If I walk into a house first, there's a really good chance I'm not even gonna be aware that it was done without a permit.
Mm-hmm.
But um, for the most part, in a situation like that, I'll simply assess it.
Yeah, and it's valid.
It's, 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 it certainly adds value, but we're talking about whether or not I'm telling the C V O. I'm probably not aware that it was, that it was done without a permit.
Correct.
If, if I, if I am aware of it, if it's like in addition, I'd probably say something if it was a remodeled kitchen, I'm sure I would.
You'll know.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's really, it really comes down to um, the, the fairness angle. Somebody is taking it, somebody is taking advantage of everybody else by doing something that they should be taxed on, um, that it will be.
And now, another, from another perspective, if we're going through all of this, you know, putting a lot of money into theoretically going into everybody's houses and um, is that an opportunity to pair that with something, like if we were to make money available to give? I was alarmed when I recently bought smoke detectors, they're more expensive than I remembered and is this an opportunity to try to look for safety issues or to make information available to people or to say, is there any thought about ever doing something proactive that would, might say, oh, I noticed there weren't any smoke detectors? Well, that's just.
Uh, yeah, you're not, you're not, you're getting some narrative.
Who is actually going in and doing home inspections?
Listers for K R T. Caitlin and I will go with them, I, I hope often uh, for two reasons. One is I want to get a feel for how they work. Everybody's a little bit different. One of the important things is that once K R T starts, that the people that do the listing stay with it through the whole project, so that we have consistency there. And so if I'm going to be speaking to a homeowner about why their value went up or why their grade is a five when it used to be a three or something like that, I want to understand what the listener was seeing and what they were doing and how they were reacting.
Well.
So while the listener will be doing all of it, I anticipate accompanying them often. Not fifty percent of the time, but a good chunk.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and Caitlin as well.
All questions solved, please, Stephanie?
No, I think more, more of a comment, um, I think we need to do a lot of education of the public of, on those.
Thanks for.
Right, you and I talked about it often when we do reevaluations or when the mill rate goes up, because I think, you know, it's, these are complicated calculations. And it's scary because you can be, you can have been in your home for twenty, thirty, forty years and then suddenly the value puts you in the, the new assessment, puts you in the, the tough spot to pay your, your taxes. So I know the state has some, um, we can have needs and things like that, but I think more of, any, anything we need to have, you know, session where we can explain to the public how it works, the mechanics, show number, have them ask questions and try to understand the resistance and the fears that, you know, somebody's gonna come into my home, look all around the place and come out and say, your home is not worth four hundred thousand dollars, but eight, or whatever number it is. So, so the more we can have information and, and even tutorials, you know, how do you, how, how is the calculation done? What is the, what is the relationship between the overall valuation of the town and the mill rate? Which I can assure you, a lot of my Camden uh, co-citizens don't understand. Um, it took me four, five times to really get it because it's not something I'm, I'm familiar with. Camden uh co-citizens don't understand. Um it took me four or five times to really get it because it's not something I'm I'm familiar with. You know, before I owned a home here. So the more we can do to educate the public, give them information, ask, have them ask questions, keep them also informed, when can they expect to be visited? You know, things like that, to stay ahead of the process and make sure that that the people, the citizens in Camden, all the information they need so that we can have a smooth process and hopefully a high level of participation, because basically that's what you need.
Right.
You need, the the more people who open the door to be about to be assessors, the better we will all be.
Right.
In the end, correct?
Yeah, Audrey, Caitlin and I have had that conversation. We plan on, we plan on doing some some really intensive reach out outreach.
But doesn't Vision participate in that? Excuse me, doesn't Vision talk about that or wish you about public outreach as part of their, before others opposing about that?
No, that was gonna be my question would be, how are they going to do their outreach? Are you going to send letters? Are you going to send little postcards?
I mean, we'll do some of that. Yeah, I know, I I agree with you, Stephanie. We're not gonna, we're not gonna raise anything. What I'd like to do is like come here really often.
Yeah.
Uh where the press can get a hold of it, and anybody that wants to listen can to go to the grocery meetings. Uh you, Sophie, you and I talked about continuing education. Maybe I'll get something on the on the curriculum there. Um because the more that people understand what I'm up to, the better it is for me. Yeah, I'm all about self-preservation here.
Well, I mean, you're up against it because we have generational people here that they are not letting anybody in their doors. So you are, you have a hard road ahead of you.
So so then one of the things that I'll explain to those people, I'll tell you right now, is that there's in Title thirty-six, there's a section seven oh six A, which basically says that if I'm denied entry, um then they can't appeal whatever value determination I made. So it it's it's not without risk. And that we're never punitive about it. But I always round down the taxpayers' favor. If I don't see it, I can't do that. So I'll see, I'll see a house, maybe I'll judge it by the outdoor outside and say, all right, well, this looks like it must be pretty nice inside. Uh and that's the judgment I made. And so it's important that people understand.
Right.
Yeah.
Absolutely. So if we were in dire need of doing the um what is the one, the full, what are we calling this? Okay, um why didn't we do that when we did, so in two thousand seventeen, we did this other thing that was the partial. I don't remember a pitch for something more comprehensive.
There was none for two reasons. One one is that we needed to save money. This is expensive.
Right.
So we wouldn't just do it. And 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 we had to do something right away because our our ratios were just so out of whack.
Right.
That we had to do something to to bring it up. One of one of the, one of one of the things that doesn't happen when you don't do the measure and list is you miss the things that we don't know about. You miss the additions, you miss the the, you know, as as honest as most people are, there's a lot that goes on. People don't even realize they need to have permits.
Right.
Right, right. That's a little common.
It's a very common, it's very, very.
Right. And there are some things they don't need a permit for, you know.
True.
You know, if they've removed all the kitchen and they don't change the plumbing or the electrical or everything else, they don't, I don't think they need a permit for that. So so at any rate, that, you know, there's a lot goes on. So the measure and list then, I was gonna say fine-tune your data, but correct your data. Make sure that that what you're judging that valuation on is correct.
So usually I find that every every time when I take the time to ask you as many questions as I want to, I always walk away agreeing with with your assessment of things. So my tendency is to say, oh, well, probably Carrie's right. But right now I'm still feeling like I'm not can, like it's hard to see how any buddy is gonna benefit from this. Is is your thought that there's a lot out there that people maybe theoretically who can afford to pay a lot more or like really high value um parts of a of a property or a building are not being accounted for. And so in that way, it's, you know, it's enough of a number that it could be hurting everybody. Is that the thought here? Or is it just like it sounds, when we're saying all this, it sounds like a, like I know people are gonna be like, this is just the town trying to be greedy. But we're, it nothing that we do raises additional revenue for the town. It's just more equally
Well, remember, the mill rate was up, the mill rate should go down.
Right.
Alright, so so that's, that's the dynamic. So we're not just taking a five hundred thousand dollar house, calling it a million and walking away with a lot more money.
Right.
Because we're 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 lowering the mill rate.
Right.
Now, because some people are gonna go up thirty-five percent and other people ten percent, some people will pay more.
And last time we did this, the people that ended up paying more were the people that had lower value properties overall.
Yeah, the the beginning of this boom was a lower end.
Like a lot of, so I, to me, it's hard to see that I would have kind of just preferred to delay the pain for everybody on that because it just doesn't feel great that like, oh, we've written. This is a lot of money. I just, I'm not, I I don't, I'm having a hard time seeing the urgency when we've done a lot of other partial
Because 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 the longer we go without a measure, and this is less accurate those partials are.
And the and and the less fair
Yep.
is the distribution of the of the taxes.
If you, but if the measure of fairness is not ability to pay, but market value.
Well, of course.
Well, that's.
That's the same for everyone.
It's a constitutional principle in the in the state certainly, but not everywhere.
Well, it's different in California, but we're not going there. Yeah, but the difference, the kind of basic difference, good understanding is this brings into an evaluation of a home, it brings the quality of that single home into the calculation, into the consideration, what that has not occurred in the last two cautious events we did, that has not occurred. So those of of us who may have done a lot of interior improvements involved, are gonna wind up uh with a higher valuation. And but the next door neighbor who kind of fall apart in the same neighborhood, um it's not. So it's 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 actually, it's it's a, it's.
Is that a big component of this that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Because people said to me during this recently, oh my God, my little small home and blah, 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 went from two fifty to three seventy-five, and I didn't do anything to it. In fact, it's falling apart. And you know, I've got problems, I can't afford to fix some of those problems. That person is probably gonna benefit from this.
That's right.
Because their property has been compared to all those houses around the market, but maybe all of them have been renovated right before.
Yeah, and and also when we did this statistical update, they got caught up in whatever group they were in. As opposed to we walk in, we say, oh, this this place needs some work.
Right. I saw I saw one sit situation in a related town where there was a multimillion dollar property, uh one lot, and next door was kind of a derelict property, but it was sold. Uh it was sold for uh six hundred thousands of dollars, but because it was six hundred thousand properties next door were multimillion, their their valuation went down. That's not fair. That's what occurs in what we did in the last two, because it's only based on market sales, period. No quality considerations, no differential kind of between homes that are right next door each other in the same neighborhood.
Yeah, we did, we did nothing to change the data of each property.
If anybody, we all need to understand that we're getting to pay for what the value of our home is, which is the, it's the land cost for sure, the housing cost and the quality of that home.
Location.
And location.
In relation to all the rest.
Uh, no question, no question.
And so a fair and equal evaluation is important. If we want to discuss a progressive tax rate, once we have a fair and equal evaluation, that's a different thing. But fair and equal evaluation is absolutely the starting point that you have to have if you want transparency in the system.
I agree with that. It's just that, it's just that there's no hope of ever, I mean, you, it's, it would be a state constitution change to be to be actual, to make it progressive. And so
Yes.
To me, I kind of look at it like, well, what's the power that I have right now?
So we shouldn't be.
We've just done a lot of it.
But it's still a system we have to work with, and if we want to make a change on that level, then we should lobby for a change on that level.
But I see, but but Tom is correct. We cannot ask for a change on that level if we don't have reliable, correct, uh data.
Well, there are. I think there are states where they don't use this system of evaluation. It's very common in New England. It's not as common in Los Angeles.
Nobody in our case?
We we have no trust. That's what is dictated. This will be the statutes and we have to, they're mostly changed by election. And by the, that's a question I'm going after. Uh because I think Massachusetts suffers from the same thing. Certainly Maine does. It's very moving, but.
Where are we funding this for? Is it gonna go in the budget or is it, what, where's, how are we paying for this?
Good question, Audrey. You want to address the budgetary considerations?
So we did set aside a portion of this in last year's budget and will set aside more, but also the overlay in science sort of purpose.
Right, that works out well. I'm not sure everybody knows what the overlay is. Maybe you want to explain that for a second.
Sure. The overlay is an amount we're allowed to uh to to tax five percent more uh than the math says that we should. No idea behind the overlay. Up to, sorry, up to five percent. We we have never gone anywhere near that high.
No, here.
Um, the pur- the purpose of it is to allow us to even things out. It's not supposed to be a budgetary matter, but when we plan an overlay, and we we, what the overlay's main purpose is, is a hedge against abatements and the cost of defending them. So we put enough money in there every year for for that, and we make sure there's enough because if I have tuition abatement and we don't have money budgeted, it's it's hard to pay for it.
Right, it's just to efficiently cover in those who may not be paying the taxes.
Right.
And and if you don't have that, in the calculation of the mill rate, you don't generate enough money to pay the bills and stuff.
So if I have a whole, we have a hundred fifty thousand dollars and we use fifty, a hundred goes in the general fund. You guys can decide that's gonna be dedicated to tax relief.
So that doesn't seem to be, when I'm saying fund balance and that requires a town meeting vote to use it.
Well, uh uh it has been significant, another side fund balance we have is a certain percentage by policy, correct? Sixteen point seven percent, but you don't usually wind up with a lot more than, we use it every year, if you know, not to reduce the taxes.
But that goes through the budget process and people follow it.
Right, right.
So I guess, I'm just saying, are we proposing to do this outside of the budget process by pulling from this one and not pulling in some, no, it's gonna go to the budget. Through the budget process?
Well.
So we're not approving anything.
It went through the budget process partially last year.
Partially. How much money did?
Went through the, set aside fifteen thousand, I mean, last year. Yeah, and so and then over the next two financial years, we'll be able to set aside
In the budget.
The rest of it.
The rest of it.
This is a two-year project.
Yeah.
And will be billed ongoing.
Of course.
So we don't have to have all the money.
It's ten thousand dollars per month over two years, basically, this is two hundred and forty-nine.
Well, actually, the project completion is seven one twenty-four. Eight, eight, one twenty, eight, eight, one twenty-four, which is actually two.
FY twenty-five.
Yeah, it's three budgets likely.
So, but we would be voting to approve a contract and committing the town to paying this pass out outside of what, this seems like the very definition of what we're not supposed to do. I mean, not, I'm not saying that there's anything.
Not sure.
But just procedurally.
Good question.
It seems like we're trying to educate the public, we're trying to do all this, and it makes sense, why not just have this conversation at the budget committee, let them decide to use the overlay or the unassigned fund balance recommended as part of the budget process and have people vote on it and view.
Well, the budget will be voted in usually. So we do recommend any money from anywhere for the next, yeah, fifty thousand we've already accrued. That will go through the voters' approval.
And we did discuss.
I just don't see that we have the ability tonight to to sign a contract for two hundred and twenty thousand dollars when we budgeted fifty.
Well, as I see it, this is a time-to-material contract that has a two-year duration. We can cancel it anytime. So we only, we only are gonna be authorized in this fiscal year to spend fifty thousand dollars. Right?
Yes.
And yeah, or other funds we may identify in the current budget. Yes, and that can we can cancel it. If we don't, if it does get refunded by the voters, then maybe we have to stop the project.
But it just seems odd because it seems like such an easy, like a good thing to just talk over the budget committee and, but I, maybe I'm not under
Why did we budget the full amount of Boston Avenue Bridge? We signed the contract to do that project.
Right.
Before we budgeted for every single dollar that we needed to match the M D O T's contribution to that.
We signed an engineering contract.
No, we signed a contract with M D O T to, to build the bridge.
But M D O T, we're not paying them.
Yes, we do. We do.
Yeah, I think we're complicating this and only.
But we're gonna, we're gonna approve this and we're gonna pay it from here. But we're gonna, in this sense, we're gonna say we we would approve this and we're gonna pay fifty thousand from here and then we're gonna the rest, it's like a non-acquisition clause. Is there a non-acquisition clause in the contract that says if voters don't approve the additional funding, then we don't?
We can do that because we don't have any sort of contract with them yet. So we could put that in.
Absolutely. That shouldn't be in there.
I guess I would just kind of like to give voters the opportunities to vote on whether they want to do this and that would be a good public outreach.
Yeah, well, I mean, they did in FY twenty.
Was that a?
Three.
Three.
Yeah.
Right, they already voted on it once.
And it wasn't like.
As part of a, I'm not saying it was hidden or anything.
And I'm, and this is an area where, I mean, why we took eighteen years, but we don't want to go there, but you're not gonna be able to the the voters can't say we're not gonna do this evaluation and think that we're gonna get away with that with the state.
So, you know, this is a very healthy thing to do.
It is.
I'm not really arguing that. It just seems out different than the past. I'm not aware of any other thing. We're gonna say we're gonna spend two hundred and twenty thousand dollars on something.
This is how it works. I can't, like, the amount of M D O T contracts to do capital projects where we've gone through this exact same process, where we've budgeted over several financial years and we haven't had voter approval all upfront, where we signed agreements and committed ourselves.
And we can insert an appropriation clause. I think else, I think it's a good idea. That will cover all that. Case studies, curious, it's not appropriated. We definitely touched on another way to fund it or cancel it. And that, at the end of the day, it's something that has to be done.
That's like what we do with the ambulance. I mean, normally we say we're signing a three-year contract, but really it could be stopped by the voters that.
Right. The appropriations clause can be put in, I'm sure. I I probably think that's a big deal, but whatever vendor you approve, but it's at some point, we're gonna be forced to finish it. This is not a decision that the voters have to say we don't want to follow state statute. The court of this is a state statute that says you should.
But I'm I'm not against doing it. I'm.
Questions, awesome. And that's what I explained. I agree with Audrey. We do have contracts, a number of them, and we've approved something that's always, it's always tied to appropriation. It's always, always, we can't approve, we can't approve a two-year contract.
I have a question, uh if I may, yeah, but more relating to the R S P process and the criteria that we're used to select, um uh what are they called? Sorry, K R, is it K R T?
Yeah.
Yeah, um.
We've used before, by the way.
Yes, we have.
We've used them before. I read the letter saying that you were really satisfied with their work and you you think that that would be a good choice for the town. But I'm just curious, what were the criteria to select them and how many R S Ps did you, how many bits did you miss?
We had two.
Two.
We had two, and I anticipated two. Right on target. And and the reason for that, Sophie, is is that um we use vision software. Vision's a pretty sophisticated camera system. Um and there aren't a lot of people qualified to do a revaluation on it. So the two that I know are qualified both been on the project. The we felt as a group, I'll I'll start with a little bit of the group and I'll get into my personal feeling about this. We all independently thought that there was good, good detail, good explanation in the K R T proposal that was lacking in the vision one. That the vision one seemed a little bit like boilerplate. Um, they left out a couple of things that we asked for in particular, uh that to me was pretty important. Uh, one was about Caitlin and me going around with the listeners on on inspections. To me, that's non-negotiable. And and I will say this, though, as To me, that's non-negotiable. And, and I will say this though, it's not all that common either. So, uh, so I appreciate K R T's willing, willingness, uh, to play by a different set of rules. Uh, because I, I believe very strongly that if Caitlin and I don't know everything that went on, we can't be very useful to the people at Camden.
I would have to commend that because I've never seen an accessory go on one of these situations ever. They're going to stand back and. Be able to, um, plausible deny it.
Right. And those guys from Massachusetts did it. Right, exactly.
So ready to decide which ones to go on and which ones not to?
I don't, my schedule is more than anything else. I mean, there will be some properties in particular that I want to see them do, but for the most part, it'll be where I've got available.
Other questions, Ford?
So I have another question. Sorry, because this is a new process. So I'm assuming that other towns around us are in the same situation. Is there an advantage to pooling resources together and, and, or, or those, all those contracts have to be individually designed?
Here's why we can't pull them, because they charge by the parcel.
Okay.
So that's, that takes care of that. And secondly, there's no savings in work for them because let's say we pooled with two other towns. Those are two separate databases, three separate databases that they were going to have to feed, uh, as well as the parcels. So, so nothing there.
And, okay, so that's super valuable to know. They charge by the parcel. And, uh, in the course of the assessment. Will the boundaries be checked?
Yes.
So, so that's also an opportunity for us to, to update our G I S map with new GPS data. Will they. Uh, share that with us and.
We own everything they do.
Okay, oh, we own everything.
Yeah, yeah. And let me finish answering your question. I'm sorry.
The boundary, can you stand my little bit with?
You mean neighborhood boundary, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so neighborhoods, so neighborhoods are, are an economic.
Neighborhood that. I was like, wow, I pretty good to survey.
We'll take a piece of hope.
Okay. Not like public property.
I'm sorry.
Between public and private property boundaries, right?
No, we wouldn't do that.
You wouldn't do that.
I, I mean, you know, one of the, one of the, one of the things that happens at a reval is we get into a lot of conversations with people. And so we might learn about a boundary problem. And at that point, I'll do some research and, and I'll help a person out to whatever extent I can. Uh, that means typically, we learn an awful lot, um, during these exercises.
Show some, some of the good and useful.
Let me finish answering your other question about, about the, the two different ones. When we hire K R T, we're getting Rob Kozier. Ken Rogers and Kevin Lee, we know that. We're getting the owners of the company and, and all of their experience. We hire Vision, we're getting employees that may have been hired a month ago. Uh, and, and we don't get to pick and choose and we have no idea if we're going to get a star. Or, or something a little less lofty.
Well, to that, then, then, Ford, we need to make a decision here for, for, for this bid award. Do I have a motion to?
When is it going to start, sorry?
Uh, February first.
Where are we at? Where are we going to investigate public education?
Well, we're going to start, we're going to start.
I'm going to start with those people that already know what's going on. Start with people that already know what's going on.
There's a lot of data collection that has.
It's going to start with there.
That's it. That's in the proposals, very clear of what's going to be doing the first month. It's a lot of internal work. But you get to.
Sorry, when are you going to start going around?
Uh, probably March and April, yeah.
Well, that's pretty much the same.
That part, we, we're going to, I, I foresee doing postpart awareness of that and we're going to, you know, we're going to get out there and, and talk.
I feel like we're going to get out there and talk. That is what's going to happen. We're going to.
People are going to come to you, which is why I will come here fairly often. Yeah, keep you appraised of what's going on.
This was like all I talked about two thousand seventeen for. So what is the, I'm sorry. No, no, I was interrupting.
In two thousand seventeen, Allison, we hadn't done anything since two thousand four. That was a major, major shock to everybody. You know, now we've been doing it almost every other year, which to me, to me is preferable because then. What we stay at market, I mean, that's, that's how we keep everything fair, is by, is by adjusting. If, 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 you know, we're, just say. There are towns that do this every year, not the whole measure in this part, but adjusting the updates that we've done. Every other year or every third year, um, those three, there are towns that do that every year.
Right.
And what they're doing is they are making sure that it stays equalized.
Right, which is a smart play.
It is, it is.
So we, should we make a motion to, so we're making a motion to approve the bid award to K R T?
Correct. This would be recommended was K R T.
The, the, the proposal that was submitted by K R T that Harry recommends, you adopt. Um, and we're suggesting to have an appropriations clause in the contract, as suggested by Allison.
Have a what?
A non-appropriation. A non-appropriation. Yeah, no. And that we work with the budget committee to make sure that we plan the budget.
Well, that's what we have to do.
Everything, everything, everything that goes through the budget was discussed with the budget committee.
Here, Harry's where the fact is going to have to do something very similar to this for, for the budget. For two years as well. Sorry, great, the three year, this will be your.
Do I have a second? So, so it's a little piece of motion.
Second.
Motion made in second and further discussion.
Could you just ask that when they do the recording, they do it like they did in two thousand seventeen where. On the sheet it says old value, new value next to the, so that basically you can go down and look.
There's going to be plenty of that. Did you, did you happen to see the Power BI that they put on their website?
The what?
Power BI table. Microsoft has a new, fairly new to me, and I think it's, I think it's fairly new, where it's a dynamic table. Where, um, we, and, and, and K R T has this capability, Power BI is.
I'm commenting because I found it really difficult this year to, to do, to look at. And compare the old value to the new. No, I'm looking at like from a neighborhood level so that people could go and see what they're.
Yeah. That'll all be on the website.
So I have a motion in the second and a further discussion. All's in favor? Five zero, thank you. We know this is very complicated and this could be a lot more public information and information, but this is complicated. Not to mention that not just the mill rate, Sophie's point, this is very complicated stuff and it's. I've never been in the face of a system that New England uses for valuation, but it is what you're required to do. Just about one.
Thank you all for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary, for answering a lot of questions. Setting up with us, yeah, and me especially.
I'm sorry.
And we're the easy part.
Not so much. Steven, you were here for the Fisherman's License discussion. Let me go to that next, so we don't have to.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Gary. A little bit talking more first. Uh, I'm just, uh, jump on here because, uh, Steve is here and has completed the approval. Of the two thousand twenty-three commercial fisherman's float permit applications, which I believe, Steve, there are seven. Uh, there are, that's correct, Red Street, Tibbetts, Appleton, Adamston, Bradstone. Uh, Winklehopper and Talbot, is that correct?
Yes.
Please.
Yeah, I just wanted to tell you, yeah, any questions I could answer.
Justin, I'll use the same, uh, applicants we had last year.
Yes.
Okay, no changes.
And they were discussed by the Harvard committee at the last Harvard committee meeting.
Correct.
Last week, and approved.
Can I ask one question?
Yes.
Under Arthur Tibbetts, there's a note on there that says this application is approved for. But denied for, and I can't read what.
Well, because Art's got a series of boats and a couple of his boats would be too big to fit in there.
Names, those are the names of the boats, probably.
Yes, he's only got one small boat, it's a very small boat. He brings in lots of wine.
He's a very, really set up.
Yeah, he does a lot of work up and down the coast. When he's in Camden, he likes to, to feel that, use the cream also.
Other questions? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the Fisherman's float, the seven, is that?
Yes. Appleton, Adamston, Bradstone, Winklehopper and Talbot.
For the twenty twenty-three season.
Motion made in second for discussion. Paul's in favor. Allison, we're going to jump in there.
So can we, can we keep Steve one second? Steve, um, at the Harvard committee, we were talking about the December twenty-third storm. And, and Steve shared with me, well, not with me, with the Harvard committee, the, the story that for me illustrates the storm. When you and Ben were in your office, can you share that story? Because I think it's so relevant and I keep sharing.
Yeah, the, this, uh, this sums up the storm when, uh, my young, he's only sixteen, he's, he works for me. He plays the bathrooms on weekends, but yeah, he was down there because he lives right next door. And I, I just, just before I tied, and, uh, one of the things that I remember was when he said to his dad, he goes, he said, uh. Hurry up, shut the door because another wave is coming.
As the building, basically, Steve.
It was smart call, actually.
Looked at your caps and the smart calls.
Again, thanks for taking the time, Steve.
Yeah, have a good night.
Thank you, Steve. I guess I keep telling the story everywhere, so. It did make me think a little bit about the refrigerator proposed for that area.
Onward to the last item on our action list would be the, um, uh, consideration of appointments for the planning board and the zoning board.
Wow, that's what I was thinking, Sandy. That's why I didn't recognize some of the rotary things. Thank you for doing.
Yeah, right, for the zoning board, um, we have Charlie, um. Uh, uh, David Coleman, uh, on the board, John Steppedaw, John Beach, and I think, uh, Brett Pickman, Ron. Were recommending Tia Anderson, Steve Beverage and Sandy Cox, is that correct?
So there's two different things going on. So there's planning board and then the Z.
Right.
So.
Did I get that straight up?
No, those were the Z. Z is, but I think. Only border of the field, right? But Deb's staying on.
Yeah, Deb's staying on, and I think we were, I thought on the zoning board, but I'll just try to you, what? Was the recommendation for the zoning board, feels beyond.
You're right, if you're doing C D A first.
That's right, okay.
Yeah.
So they are Tia Anderson, Steve Beverage and Sandy Cox for recommendations for who the zoning board appeals on.
I make a motion that we approve the nomination of Tia Anderson, Sandy Cox and.
Steve Beverage.
Steve Beverage, uh, at the Zoning Board of Appeals, second.
A motion made in second discussion. Almost in favor. Congratulations, seeing you another job.
Thank you for your service, really. And thank you to all the people of Live Work Media.
Thank you, Sam. Twenty years, thirty years ago. Thanks for staying, Sandy. Uh, and to the planning board, I believe the recommendations, uh, Lucia, Dick, Kate Corbin. And John Cole, is that correct? So there are two member, members, member positions for the planning board that are being recommended to the board.
As, were those as full members or alternates?
I thought they were members, but I, as I saw, but I could be wrong, as you do.
So Jeremy says he can step in, but maybe that's not needed. It's just regular members.
Who's that?
Um, Karen Lee sent a message saying that we could add to that, but is it regular members or, I can't, I know we did something kind of funny. Last time, um, we tried to get Andrew to stay on. And he still got away, but I think we kept him on as a. As a full member and somebody else as an alternate, Mark Murray. So does that mean that we need to bring somebody up to, that who's currently an alternate? Do they need to be a full member?
I didn't see that in the recommendation.
Yeah.
Okay.
I see that, I'm trying. Yeah, I'm not letting you get upgraded. What time? I can't.
Is it, that's not going to kick him out? Is it, what does that one say? Right?
Yes.
We really needed a paper screen.
Yeah. That's it.
Did you hear me?
Yeah, you can hear, you can hear you. Uh, you heard our discussion already about the members, we're just trying to clarify who are members and who are. Also, it's, it's, I understood to be just Lucia and John as new members in the planning board, is that correct?
Uh, that's correct. And remember Andy Smith, um, you reappointed him last time and he actually needs to get off. So you appointed him as, and that's, this is kind of in my memo. So Andy Smith needs to come off. Um, that would leave us with, um, you would need to name at least one full member. And I would recommend Lu- Lucia. Um, as a member.
Full member.
And John has, has an alternative.
Correct.
And why, why is that?
Particularly right now, John, I talked to John about this and John is going to be on vacation for the mo- most of February and all of March. During a, um, review that's happening right now, he's going to participate as much as he can, but he likely won't be there for the, um. For the discussion, um, when it comes down to it.
But the alternates then just operate as regular members when that person isn't available. I mean.
Correct. And you never know when people are going to be available and when they're not. That's the unfortunate thing.
I guess my instincts would be based on. John, I mean, John worked as a professional planner.
They both did.
The other thing that I was just, uh, he seems just very.
The question, Jeremy, why, why was the rationale for Lucia to be a member and John alternative, is any, because any?
He said schedule.
Schedule, I see.
Schedule, they both served as, as municipal planners. Um, John served as municipal planner down in, uh, Naples, Florida. And Breckenridge, Colorado, um, and Lucia did in Northern Virginia, both in the private and public sector. So either way, I think, I mean, the board's getting two great people, um, with lots of experience. So either way, um, however you want to handle it.
Correct. Other board questions or a motion?
I, I make a motion that we name, so we, we're naming John Cole as an alternate and Lucia de Cordray. Uh, Cordray, sorry, Lucia, as a, a regular member to the planning board.
Okay. Motion made in second, uh, in the running discussion board, all's in favor. Five zero, thank you, thank you, Jeremy.
Yeah, thank you guys, appreciate it.
All right, that's the last of our action items. Um, now we'll move on to Audrey's management reports.
Yes, so, um. For the Martin DeKiebe Ice Slash Snowstorm, um, because of the duration of that storm and how steady it was all day. There's still peanut continuing and, uh, that's particularly true for the sidewalks and, um, you know, the public parking lots. So Public Works crews are going to continue to clear the sidewalks, but as of, as of now, they're, you know, still pretty slippery. So we're just asking everyone to take extra care when you're walking on the sidewalks and they're hoping that, um. They'll be, or they will be cleared in time for, uh, Friday. It's just going to be our next snowstorm, so.
It's winter.
Life of, life of the power crews. So, um, the, on tomorrow, there's going to be a meeting of the. Parking advisory group to talk about the paid, um, parking pilot, there are just too many, too much, um. Too many keys in that for the public landing. So they're going, everyone's going to meet tomorrow at one P M to review, uh, a draft report. That was prepared by John Burke that summarized the findings and looked at the, the data that was collected from the meters and. You know, the amount of money that was collected from the meters and times and, um, duration and all of that. And also they'll discuss additional recommendations and comments that have come through from community members. Uh, Scott Entwistle gave a lot of good feedback, um. You know, we've had other residents who've given, you know, uh, input as to what would make that program, you know, better for everyone. Yeah, one of the other. So we'll, we'll talk about all of that and the group will finalize recommendations. And then bring that forward to the select board to discuss and think about.
Perfect.
Do we want to do it again? Do you want to expand it? What are, what are the things that we want to look at, um, for the upcoming season? Uh, another update, the fire department submitted all the necessary paperwork to main EMS to become a non-transporting first response. Uh, another update, the fire department submitted all the necessary paperwork to Maine EMS to become a non-transporting first responder service. And so this means that if a Camden resident calls nine one one for emergency medical assistance in certain circumstances. So it tends to be some of the more serious cases or when there's like a mass casualty incident. Like if they're, you know, a car accident and a number of vehicles are involved. Um, members of the Camden Fire Department who are trained as EMTs or advanced EMTs. Matt Keep is a, actually at the paramedic level. They will show up on scene, uh, in addition to Northeast Mobile Health Services to provide patient care. And, you know, this is something that, uh, has been in the works for quite a few years. Um, and it's gone in front of the budget committee. I think, uh, this year will be the third or the fourth year. I'm not exactly sure which. Um, but it's, it's been a long process of trying to train up community members, staff, so that we have, you know, a, a good pool of EMTs who can, um, be on call and volunteer to be part of the service. And, uh, a lot of the credit goes to Matthew Keep, who really built the program from scratch and became a paramedic himself. And did a lot of the work to organize it and come up with standard operating procedures and do all the other administrative, um, you know, policies and work to get the program going. So a lot of, a lot of credit to Matt for all of his hard work in, in getting this to the full where we're hopefully going to be up and operational, uh, soon. And that's, I think it's really important, Northeast is still going to be the ambulance provider. There's still going to be one transporting people and responding to nine one one calls as well. This is just to help supplement what they're doing so that, you know, people who need nine one one services, um, you know, for, for medical, getting even better service than what they currently get. Uh, also, I wanted to do a sort of like a standing, um, update, and this was recommended by Sophie. Um, an update on the, uh, National Fish and Wildlife Foundation grant. So, um, we still don't have a formal grant agreement from NIFLIP for the Maga River watershed, community resilience and habitat restoration project that was awarded to the town this summer. Uh, NIFLIP was asked for additional information, um, in regards to project metrics and, you know, things like updating, you know, maps and, uh, other information on contractual services. And that, just a bunch of smaller things that they need before, um, everything is finalized. So that's something that, uh, both the people have been, um, putting a lot of work into over the past month. Things do get a little bit slow up because of the holidays.
Sure.
That should be complete pretty soon. Um, but just to remind everyone that the period of performance for the project began back in June of twenty twenty two. So any work that's, that's been done between June and up until now is all reimbursed, I should say. Uh, another, another interesting thing that I, we haven't really talked about a lot with even some of the people who have been on the select board for a bit longer. Uh, definitely not with, um, newer people to select board is the fact that Camden is a dues paying member of the main service center coalition. And we have been since around two thousand eight. So the coalition was formed by the larger towns and cities in Maine that felt that MMA's legislative policy committee wasn't really focused on the issues that were, are most important to service centers, which, you know, have a much bigger burden in terms of services and costs than a lot of the smaller bedroom communities. Because people, you know, travel to those communities to work and, and use services there. And, you know, they aren't always, you know, residents who are paying property taxes. And, you know, uh, around the time that it was formed, uh, there wasn't, revenue sharing wasn't split up the way that it is now. So that was one of their major successes was getting the revenue sharing two program, um, put into legislation. And the revenue sharing two program looks at revenue that's collected in the municipalities. So it isn't just sort of dipping it up amongst everyone by their population. It's also, you know, what, what do you contribute?
Mm-hmm.
And that really has been waning over the past, I'd say, five years.
Hmm.
Um, you know, particularly with the Mills administration as they ramped up the, the amount of revenue sharing that comes back to the towns. So, you know, the service center coalition is really trying to figure out, are we a relevant organization anymore? Are there other things that we need to be focusing on? Do we need to be paying a little bit closer attention to what our lobbyist is doing and focused on? So that, you know, it's reflecting the interest of members. So I thought it would be good to just tell you about that and give you some periodic updates throughout the years to how that goes. So that when it comes to budget time, we need to make a decision about, do we want to remain a dues paying member?
Right.
All of you have a good idea of what is the benefit of.
Thank you.
What's the amount that we pay?
It's a couple thousand dollars. Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Again, it's a, a lot of different member organizations that were asked.
I understood. That's good feedback.
Trying to figure out is this one that, that related to maintain or what?
How much is the, um, the dues for NMA?
Oh. Much, much more expensive.
Yeah, much more.
Somebody monitoring what they're lobbying for too. Wasn't that going to be a?
We, we are. Actually, actually Kerry's a member of the legislative policy. He is. And, and I'm working with him.
Right, that's why.
It keeps me in the loop. Um, so, yes, we, we have created a assistant to go around the system because we didn't nominate anyone on time to be on the legislative agenda.
He's laser focused. They're laser focused on trying to fix the, um, property tax stabilization. So it's means tested. It's, you know.
Yeah.
It's something that's going to be funded by the state from year to year. So it doesn't put us in a situation where, you know, the, the state doesn't fund it and you have to figure out how they cut my gap.
Is that what the state is, or, I'm sorry, is that what MMA's committee is working on? Or is that what Kerry is trying to get that committee to work on instead of?
Working on.
Yeah, it agrees that it's a priority and Kerry's got unique skills to.
He's been tapped.
Yeah, because it was a really great thing. Established as a priority initially.
Yes. Those are mine.
Select board, this, I was going to say, this is your answer, if you'd like to.
Oh, sure. Um, uh, the MIDC, Mid Coast Internet Development, uh, company, uh, did not, or it looks like, I don't know, they've received word officially, but they are not, uh, recommending the, uh, main coast, main connected connectivity authority is not recommending that their grant be approved. Um, so the MIDC is sort of, uh, taking a look to see what the next step will be. Um, the planning board also had a meeting, um, about a potential new spring, uh, subdivision on Spring River.
Four forty bell special, yes. Which is the meeting for on Friday, Republican, but at one P M.
I believe so.
Here.
Right. And I think the meeting that they had can be watched on YouTube. I don't know if you'd like to see.
Ms. Allison.
Um. Yeah, so the, um, I think there's a theory to talk about Spring River. Um, here, the Conservation Commission, um, has been working on a number of things that we already talked about with the stormwater mapping. Um, but most recently, they're focused on meeting on peer recommend, uh, reviewing the harbor committee's, um, recommendations for the, um, uh, updates to the harbor ordinance regarding, uh, private peers, sort of the culmination of when the moratorium expires, what the recommendations would be.
Yeah.
For changes. Um, the harbor committee had their recommendations. The Conservation Commission had a number of concerns. Um, or not going to say concern, just looking at it from a little bit of a different perspective through the, um, conservation and, and public access perspective. There was a lot of interest, I think, in both the, the harbor committee and the, um, Conservation Commission both mentioned wanting, you know, more information and understanding of what other communities are doing, different considerations. Um, I, the Conservation Commission talked about that quite a, a bit. It was written in the harbor committee's thing too, but just, you know, there's a limit to the knowledge base that volunteers are, are going to have in terms of evaluating the impact of these structures and what's typical and what isn't. And what, you know, other towns are doing and where do we fall on that continuum? So, um, definitely some interest in, you're possibly being able to hire, um, hire somebody or get, you know, maybe those organization that does that and just advising so that we, our committees can give the best quality recommendations. Um, the Tim Rucker Pathways Committee, I wasn't able to attend that. Adra, um, was there in my place, um, but one of the things that continues to be a topic of conversation. We had a smaller group meeting about was this, you know, just like the Elm Street sidewalk debacle of, um, how do we e- evaluate is what the problems are with the status quo? We have, um, a few community members that have approached the pathways committee. Just with not, not in connection to the stop and go or monitoring intersections much, or just the pure Elm Street sidewalk. These are the issues. Um, so we did, um, the couple of members of Pathways Committee went on a walk with a woman who lives on Union Street. She was in the wheelchair and slept here for a member of years and just kind of walked with her. And, um, I filmed that for them, just asking her questions and, um, kind of demonstrating what that process is like. Um, and that, I, I knew it was that, but that was, you know, eye opening. And the pathways committee is going to kind of work on consolidating some of that feedback and working to present it to the select board. So that we can kind of understand what some people feel problems are. Um, micro solid waste, um, budgets, uh, will be voted on soon, on the twenty fifth. Um, so we had a finance committee meeting to review those recommendations. Um, one of the things that's going to be coming up, um, that some of you might be interested in is the, the budget that's proposed to the make a solid waste board is going to include, um, a bag fee increase, um, basically like everything, um, costs of trash are going up massively. And the, it's either going to be a question of tax, subsidizing it more with taxpayer money or increasing fees. Um, the, the feeling, um, in the trajectory of liquid solid waste has been for a number of years to try to wean ourselves off of so much taxpayer support and making more sort of fair and user based system. We're continuing that. Um, so the proposal is going to be the small bags going from one fifty to two fifty. And the large bags going from two fifty to three fifty via commensurate increase in the per pound fee. Um, it's, you know, it's not what anybody wants, but the other option is raising taxes. So the goal here is to, um, hopefully be sending a budget to the towns that is flat. Um, right, yes, excuse me, the assessment. So, um, this board and public doesn't get a chance to vote. It's kind of like the schools, they get sent a bill for solid waste. Um, but that, if depending on what the solid waste board votes on, that should be flat. And then of course, there's a public, um, input opportunity as there always is. So on the twenty fifth, um, at six thirty in this room, liquid solid waste board will be voting on the budget. So that includes like the budget for the swap shop, the budget for, you know, all the employees for, the plan is to keep recycling, you know, the same. But, um, a lot of people have a community of transportation and what we should or shouldn't do. But often has missed that opportunity to, to weigh in. So, I love it, Chris.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you very much. Ms. Sophie.
Oh, uh, a couple of things. So, um, first, the, the Magutico River Citizens Advisory Committee has met again. And it's really, it's really a great working room. And they've put together the first volume of the newsletter. The newsletter can be, uh, well, is distributed by email. You can sign up to receive the, uh, email for the database that emails on the, on this copy of the, the newsletter. Uh, we're going to put it on the town webpage and, and drink it with it. We're also, as Audra suggested, going to use the text messaging app we have to remind people that they can sign up to receive the newsletter. We also had tonight, and the second thing that's done is they've created a logo. So there's now an official logo. Um, of the Magutico River, the Magutico River Citizens Advisory Committee. And I will put it on the, the title you can see, but, um, yes, there was a fierce competition, uh, from the, the members themselves. Three of them came up with each one, two or three different logos plus, uh, Facebook, um, uh, Forest Bell Environmental also produced a logo. So we, we had a, a participatory meeting where we all voted for logos and we all discussed it. And even though this, so this logo was designed by Ellen, one of our members. Um, and, uh, we, we, everybody really loved the little fish and the river flow and especially the tagline, no stone unturned. And, uh, the, the committee feels that we need to turn every stone to really understand the issues about managing the river appropriately. So it's a fantastic group of people. Um, I recommend, uh, everyone in Camden to subscribe to the newsletter because they do a fantastic job of putting it together. The other thing they're putting together is, um, we're having a speaker series and the first one was tonight at four thirty P M. It's a Zoom presentation and where, uh, the, the committee is inviting experts, um, about fisheries, biologies, water temperature and, and all kinds of different expertise to give a presentation and have an open conversation. So people can ask questions, better understand what the issues are. And those, um, uh, speaker series will be every two, every two weeks in our attendance with, um, basically the, the meeting of the committee. So I, I want to thank my colleagues of the, the nine members of the committee. They're doing an amazing work. Uh, we have expanded the length of the meeting to two hours instead of an hour and a half. And they also got fifteen minutes early to start working even earlier. So this is, this is a fantastic committee and support them, ask them questions. Their names are on the newsletter, sign up for the newsletters and more information is going to come out and more questions and, and a lot of the work from them.
Perfect.
And that's my first thing.
Did you say that the, the speaker series is that the public can ask questions?
Absolutely. Yes.
This is great, Chuck. Thank you. That's.
So, and we're also distributing it to the press. So we're, we're trying to reach as many people as we can. So we can, the purpose of the committee is to really get some questions from the public. And what are your questions? What do you really want to learn about the, the river? And use the committee to source those, the answers by inviting speakers, by inviting all kinds of different people so we can learn more. All right. Um, that was my first update. My second one from the harbor committee that took place last week, um, we spoke extensively about the December twenty third storm. And the harbor committee, um, gave me a letter that they have asked me to read to the select board that I will share with you. Um, but basically.
Then send it out to everybody.
I will send it out to everybody. But, uh, I will read, read the letter to you and I, I said I would do it with, with great pleasure because I think it's a really good idea.
Um, by the way, this will, this is just for information in the events of, we will discuss and expect when we, uh, soon.
If one were to look for the positive, for a positive from the December twenty three, twenty third storm that hit Camden Harbor, perhaps it would be this. This storm exposed in undeniable fashion the harbor's vulnerability to the effects of climate change. Storm surge, wave action, and astronomical high tides came together in a destructive combination that resulted in hundreds of thousands of dollars in damage to both municipal and private property in the inner and outer harbors. Over the past century, we've seen only twenty-two storm tides of the magnitude we saw on December twenty third. But six of them have happened in the past five years. These damaging and ultimately expensive storms are happening more frequently and will continue to hit Camden in the years ahead. The harbor committee believes it is our obligation to do whatever we can to mitigate the impact on Camden residents, property owners, and businesses from events like this. While we may not be able to change the frequency of the storms or lower the sea level, though we should each do our part to try, While we may not be able to change the frequency of the storms or lower the sea level, though we should each do our part to try. We ought to pursue every option for increasing Camden Harbor's resilience to climate change. Therefore, we are asking the select board to reengage with the Army Corps of Engineers and other appropriate entities to immediately pursue a feasibility study for possible construction of breakwaters in the outer harbor. These breakwaters would protect infrastructure, reduce erosion, and improve the harbor's usability by vessels in all weather conditions. The Army Corps feasibility study, which would take up to two years to complete, would be the next step in the process that was initiated by the town in two thousand and seven and resulted in the Army Corps' federal interest determination in twenty sixteen. That will be attached in the letter. I'll, I'll circulate it to all the members. The harbor committee and town staff met with representative of the Army Corps in November twenty twenty and discussed the option of the town moving forward with a feasibility study under the Army Corps Section one oh seven Continuing Authority Program. But without concrete guidance from the select board, the process has stalled. We are asking you to restart it by directing town staff to reach out to the Army Corps for an updated agreement and to research any grant or private funding that may be available. With the December twenty third storm causing more than three hundred thousand dollars in damage to municipal property alone. The local cost share required by the Continuing Authority Program will prove to be money well spent if it reduces the amount spent by taxpayers, businesses, and property owners to repair damaged infrastructure in the future. Thank you for your consideration of this request respectfully submitted by Josh Moore, the chairman, the chairman of the Camden Harbor Committee.
Thank you very much. Good letter.
It's an excellent letter. Yeah.
I know.
Yeah, yeah, before the holidays, so it's gonna be a little more complicated.
Yes, but, and I'm happy to work with you and the harbor committee to, to reengage and just see how we can.
The court dropped yourself in this, uh, because of the activity. So if it's, again, we're, we'll do some homework on that. We're only, I need communication to, we're probably, I'm pretty worried saying. Yeah, I want you to do a big discussion on here, but this is a, just a precursor of an info or a story. We're gonna have to, we're gonna consider it if we can. That's gonna be the question.
Did, I noticed that, I, I didn't watch the last Harvard committee meeting, but, um. The initial letter that they wrote or draft recommendations for, for peers was before the storm. And then.
Yes.
So, so a lot of our conversation at the Conservation Commission was like. Hmm, and whether, you know, we saw a PR wash up at the art club, like it does, um.
Yeah.
Did, did, well, I think, so I think.
Any other discussion other than just a breakwater discussion or?
So I want to table this discussion.
Okay.
When we have the recommendations of the harbor committee in front of us, because I think it'll be a more productive way. They've talked about it a lot, but I do think that the recommendations they came up with before the storm covers that. Because, because they, they, they had anticipated, uh, they looked at data, they looked at all the data of the last astronomical tides. I mean, they've done a lot of, uh, of good work in terms of thinking through, um. The, the recommendation in terms of height, aesthetics, all kinds of things. So I would, I would like to defer this conversation until we have something in front of us. Because I think it's going to be more, more productive.
Thank you.
That's it for me. Sorry, it was a long update.
Stephanie.
So, yeah, I have a couple of things as well. I went to cemetery committee meeting and that was really interesting. Um, they're doing a lot of cool things and, uh, yeah, I'm really excited about being part of that. Um, the other thing is I have a friend that is on, um, American Red Cross. And Camden area is their launching pad this year for, um, smoke alarms. And they're doing a big push. They're getting the area, um, select board members to kind of be on board with. Partnering in a way of just being aware that it's happening and sharing the information, how to sign up to get, um, the free smoke alarms. Camden Rockport already have that sort of program in place, but it's, um. It's, help is always needed. And the Red Cross, um, is hoping that the, um, when it. When the time comes, that we might use our texting system to do a blast of. Sign up here for your free smoke detectors through the Red Cross. We're not using town.
Work.
People and resources. It's a Red Cross thing. So I'll bring that forward when that comes again.
Sure.
Um, I had one, oh, I had EMS committee meeting at the end of the month. So if anybody has any questions or they want me to take any questions, thoughts, anything that you have. Email me, text me, let me know.
Good, good. That's great. Thank you. When is that meeting? January?
January twenty sixth, I think.
It's a Thursday. Yeah, I think it is a Thursday.
So I feel good, mate. So.
It's gonna be both.
With that, I would like to, uh, change a motion to leave the select board in adjournment. Uh, executive session under M R S A, section four oh five, six eight, personal matter. I mean, second, no, measurement of second, all those in favor? I see. Thank you. So we'll shut down connectivity here for a moment to get, I'm gonna break if you like, while we shut down everyone. Audra?
Yes.
You have, um.
I do.
I mean, I just want to make sure you have this on.